The next item is number 15, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Docket number 16-3558, block 1892, lot 33, 351 Riverside Drive, and the Shinazi Residence, an individual landmark. The application, it's a neo-French Renaissance-style mansion designed by William B. Tuttle and built in 1907 to '09. And the application is to construct additions, excavate at the side yard, modify masonry openings, and install windows and doors.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Reba Ashby, Preservation Staff. The item is 351 Riverside Drive. It's an individual landmark located in upper Manhattan at the corner of Riverside Drive and West 107th Street. At the north-facing rear facade, which you can see over here, the applicant proposal includes modifying an Oriole as part of the construction of an addition, removing a parapet and creating a new dormer, as well as excavating a portion of the side yard to create a mechanical pit and install a barrier-free access ramp. At the east-side facade, the proposal includes modifying masonry openings at the basement level, as well as lowering the grade of the portion of the side yard to create a single terrace level instead of the existing two-level space, and modifying a garden wall. The proposed addition and dormer at the north facade will be visible from oblique views when looking south from Riverside Drive. The owner, Lisa Schwartz, is here, as well as the architect Charlotte Worley and other members of the design team to elaborate.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Schwartz. When my husband and I closed on the 105-year-old Shinazi residence in the summer of 2013, we considered it a great privilege and responsibility to become the custodians of this important piece of New York City architecture. We set out with a great team of architects from the firm of Walter B. Melvin &amp; Associates to define the scope of work required on the house's exterior to ensure its welfare for the next century. The effects of time, pollution, and neglect all contributed to a severe decline in the house's appearance and integrity. Placing importance on the authenticity of materials' choice, and with permits from the Landmark staff in place, we are now midway through this extensive cleaning, repair, and restoration process. Turning our attention to the interior, and guided by the same principles, we engaged the team from Charlotte Worley Architects to help us design a scope that would both restore lost elements and at the same time address functionality of the house for modern living. A few of the examples include returning the kitchen to the English basement location, adding air conditioning, and making sure that elderly residents, which we expect to be by the time this is completed, can access living space throughout the house. In thinking of these items through, and in trying to maintain the flow of the house as originally intended, it became clear that some of these changes couldn't help but impact the structure's exterior. That brings us before you today as we seek approval for these changes, and I'll turn over the details especially to Charlotte Worley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We've broken the categories here. Pretty complex facades on the house, so I hope you can read the cutoff here. Here are five topics. So we're rooting that way, and we can also refer to the photographs that we have of the exterior facades, summertime, but the side yards are tight. Let's just jump right in here. This is the existing basement, the existing site. The east elevation, what we're planning to alter is only at the basement level here. I'll show you the details. The east terrace here, you see there's an areaway with two sets of steps to street level and meander your way down. And this is the higher pedestal of grass with some existing marble benches. The back stair is here in the plan. The mechanical pit is located underneath the dash line here. I'll show you in more detail. And then the dormer appears. Here is the historic plan of the first floor, which comes into play as we talk about the back stair. Let's see here. Here's an existing dome waiter, and here's the back stair. And I can come back to this slide, too. So here's our proposed plan with the groups here. Here, wood didn't show up before. Here's the mechanical pit and ramp in the north facade. Here's our new back stair, east terrace, and our proposed new windows here. Topic one, east elevation. The existing east facade of the house, which looks onto the museum that's next door, it's not a residence next door, but we're proposing removing the existing white marble, saving what we can and using new where we need to from the quarry with Walter Melvin's office building the restoration, to repair around a new window here that is in relationship to how we've arranged the kitchen downstairs. Centered on the three-part window that is the dining room upstairs, these two doors currently are in the same room, going up to the same place, so we're proposing consolidating that function into one door here. Let's go to the details here. Also, note, we're moving these stairs back out of the way. Go back one real quick. You see, the dash line of what we're removing is very close to the sill here, so that was the driver of moving these stairs. The new basement window set is responding to other windows that will be in the English basement kitchens. Here on the south facade is a pair of basement windows with the divided lights that proportionally is the same. All the windows in the basement have these existing grates, so we're going to replicate that in kind, the same material, steel with a patented finish to match. The doors, these match existing doors throughout the house with simple lights. And the metalwork, the package of metalwork is staff-level review on this project, so this corresponds with the grouping of metalwork for the house. And this is a secondary set being in the back as opposed to the front door. There's the section, the door, and the gates over. Topic two, east terrace. This is the existing east terrace. Let's see, photos show bifurcated levels here. This is that areaway our new window will be. This is the little bit of grass back here, just looking south. These are the stone benches, and they're pilasters as part of it. We can only guess, or I do anyway, that this was part of some Victorian ornamental garden vignette you'd see out the window. There's no real practical use of the width of this. So we're proposing just removing that upper section, dropping the whole thing down to this lower section, so that that areaway even just feels safer for backing out the refrigerator you've got to get out. And again, repairing with salvaged material or using new. This is marble. The side walls, also marble. Dismantling and reassembling those benches. So here are those existing benches in the same spot, and these pilasters grow. The 3'6" of this dimension is here. So there's a symmetry that we've sort of found in moving those steps back on the east terrace here. There's blue stone steps that exist now, and we'll just continue that material here. There is, and you see it, let's see, hard to see here, but there's trellis work here that stays, so our works really stops in this zone, and this will be restored. Back stairs, our topic three. Existing north facade, and our dash line here is the area of removal. And the dash line here is our area of replacing. You may observe here, proportion of everything is exactly the same, the way it connects to the house, exactly the same. Windows will be new as part of, you know, they're all new windows here under another application, but these new windows in new locations are here. And then, let's look here, there's a, this cantilever is out. This no longer cantilevers out, and it's a stone wall. Just to make it easier, a picture's worth a thousand words here. We've done a photo simulation of our new in comparison to the existing. So you see the complex connections here, the neat way that the stone cornices are against a bit of a wall here, and the red copper panelwork is connected in the same way. There are these existing brackets here that we're going to replicate or salvage if we can, that we're using for a new canopy here. So the idea of there being a little bit of safety from the rain or snow as you're unlocking this door, we're proposing a new canopy, simple freeze, just a little pent roof with these existing cornices of hardwoods.
Right, and this is actually on, this is on the elevation that's not on the street, right? You see it through an alleyway, through the side yard.
This is the front of the house here, so this is that side yard, and this is the area we're talking about here. Now, this is a pair of doors with, a single-door pair of side lights and a transom. Let's go to the detailed photos here, without the grills on them, so you can see. And the idea of this is, we've come down steps, and we're halfway down to the English basement here, so the accessibility of light getting into that room was why we made the opening larger than this. The reason we've made the projection what it is, is because the house had that dome waiter. So in the spot of that dome waiter, which we studied diligently other locations of, but were really hard-pressed to destroy the fabric of the first floor, is magnificent, not a landmark, but magnificent, and the intention is to restore all of that. So the placement of the passenger lift just became known that that's where it goes. And so the dimensional difference between that dome waiter and the smallest passenger lift on the market is 50 inches, which is what this difference is. Because this has grown, the idea of putting windows on the west and the east just helped sort of mitigate a bulk feeling on the side, and also makes that back stair pleasant in a way that historically one could imagine it would be if it had that kind of exposure to it. Also note, this magnificent Oriole of the library is, helps mitigate that appearance from the street as well. It's hard to look past this to see anything else once you've really gotten off a glance at it. Here it is in the photo, before restoration. So details of the back stair, we detail the canopy. The underside of the canopy harkens back to the cantilever detail of the back stair, its panel. We're proposing just dropping a downlight in the circular part of it, but simple, simple construction. The details of the panels, the profiles, everything matches existing. We don't, it would be hard-pressed to go outside of the kit of parts this house provides for you for anything new. I wouldn't dare. And let's see, what else is here? Let's go to the next. This is the view from the street.
For that, for the Oriole extension?
Yes.
Is that where the elevator's going? Or you're saying that?
Behind it.
Are those windows going to be real windows to the interior, or those are just going to be blank windows into the elevator shaft?
No, oh, I'm sorry. I confused you, I think.
Sorry.
The back stair, this is the function of the back stair. The back stair moves north and gets out of the way of the passenger elevator.
So that's internal?
It's internal.
Okay.
Right, we've not changed the.
So it's actually the stair that's in that space?
Okay.
Right.
Sorry.
Thank you.
But to maintain fire egress, because this is the fire stair, and swinging doors, and an elevator cannot open into a fire stair, all of those are taken into consideration in the plan to make sure that this is safe, and only impacting it as much as we need And here, the view from the street, three steps and it's gone from the sidewalk. It's here, and there's a tree here. So we've just removed a piece of the tree so that you can kind of get a feel for what it's like if that tree were ever to disappear, but.
Some people put trees back.
I'm sorry. I thought that would have been cool to say, here's a bush, and here's the same bush. Topic four, mechanical pit. You can't do a renovation of this extent these days without putting in central system. The equipment that we're using is top-of-the-line, greenest out there, not geotechnical, but placement of where they could go, there really is no option tucking it in to the roof. It's not safe, the flat area of the roof's not wide enough. We've divvied separate compressors up, and we need five, and we've got not five spots. So knowing that this was an expensive venture, but knowing that it was the most complimentary to how this house will look and feel by the end of the day, we're proposing a mechanical pit that's tucked in on the north side, and it's here. Right, there's our back stair, so we're here. Underneath the Oriole, there's steps here that go back to an existing side door. We're proposing, starting at the edge of the house, and creating a ramp here. There's a gate enclosing the mechanical pit, and the technician can step down a ladder, too. The width of the pit is based on the amount of free air the compressors need, and pulling out the filter, you know, your hand will probably be touching the wall at that point and getting it back in. And this equipment actually got bigger since we proposed it. I thought things went the other way. So here's the detail of that. Here's our compressor. It's right at that level of the lawn. We've got a six-inch curb here. The ramp, more so than the pit, required a guardrail of some kind here because it does drop. And we started that, let me line up, we started that right at where it's not legal to have, you know, just an open area to drop. And I imagine, you know, the person mowing the lawn could inadvertently back in and fall next to the pit. And again, the metalwork that's being reviewed at staff is, you know, it's not plain and dumb. It should look like it may have already always been here, so that's the idea. It's part of the kit of parts we're proposing for other. So here it is in the plan. Here's the dash line of the Oriole, and there's our new stair here. Fifth topic, last one, the dormer here. Existing elevation, this bay here is the bay of the main stair. It's got a stone cornice and parapet. I've got pictures of it on another slide, but this is what we're proposing here, removing the parapet and placing another red copper pressed panel. It's the sister to the back stair, wood casement windows. So here from, here's the parapet that's removed. Here's the stone cornice that remained. Here is the drawing of that. So that parapet, here's that cornice, that parapet was 30 inches high and going up another 32 with our dormer. The idea of the dormer came about the notion that we're in the attic, which is an occupiable space at this point, and there are no windows. You can look up through, you know, those cheesy bubble skylights at the moment. We're proposing putting steel or wood skylights that open up, that feel like they, too, were part of the original idea of this house. And so putting a dormer that had windows just made this much more of a pleasant place. It also helps solve what is Verda Makers' problem here. These existing skylights that were probably put in in the 70s at some point are tricky to get out on here to remove snow and ice, so this will eliminate one of those things that the old house suffers from, just from, God forbid, this falls into disrepair at some point in its next hundred years. And here is details. Okay, it's on the street again. Again, this is probably a two-step one, and if you're looking for it to get here, but, all right, let me see if I can even find that. Here's the little sliver of that main stair bay, and then here is our dormer upon it. I'll note, too, that these will be red copper that will patina naturally, because it's a lot of pressure to match the existing patina in that way, and it's not authentic, and none of us on the team really feel like that's an appropriate tack to take with this. Let it patina naturally. This house will be standing long enough for it to look right.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Fred and Danadi.
Is the extension caused by the elevators, I understand it? Of the stair moving out? Is that as small as it can be? In other words, it's the size of the smallest elevator that you?
Yeah, the math, the dimensions on that is the existing, back to the, this existing dorm of dome waiter here, that's off the pantry.
Right.
This, and a closet that's 24 by 24 now. On the market now, they don't call them elevators, it's passenger lifts because they're tiny. Interior dimension of the smallest is 30 by 36, but with the structural shaft and the track that that needs, the total net new dimension is 50, and we're coming out 50. So we've got a winder, this isn't accurate for now, there's a winder in that stair here. We've not gone into building departmental changes, C of O here, and that inspector's going to walk through, and I'm proposing keeping that winder, but I may lose that argument. So I have room for one more tread before I then trip the fire egress rule, so I'm hedging my bets on that one. But I do like that we only took what we needed.
But wait, the elevator could actually be more interior, right? It could be.
Not without destroying.
Into the room. I know. You're either destroying the outside or destroying the inside.
Yeah. And we did look, and I actually proposed one, and Lisa thought I was insane, but I was trying to do my due diligence in that regard.
No, but I mean, so it could protrude into that room, and that room could, the wall that it protrudes into could get thicker, so that the integrity of the kind of the rectangle could stay, but it would just be smaller. Is that true?
Thicker by 50 inches, which is a lot. Yeah, because I had to make it, I was trying to make a niche you could put furniture in and things like that, and because of where it's located, it would destroy a ceiling, which is, you know, vaulted and highly detailed. It would really be a shame to do that.
Okay, I have one other question, and that has to do with the dormer. So you were saying that there are no windows up there. Does that, is that because the other dormers don't serve that same continuous space?
Right, that's right, they don't. Oh, I shouldn't stay on that first one. All of these dormers here, this is on the third floor, and these are stone panels, and so the floor of the attic is right in here. So there, there's no dormer that serves the attic.
Those dormers are all stone?
You can see it in the photo, actually.
No, I can see it, two lines, so I was wondering if that little bit of it in the photograph, on the bottom of the photograph in the top left, if that's a window. I thought that that was, that little bit was a window. It's not. You're saying that's a?
This is a window. That is the window, and it's on the third floor. The attic is the fourth floor. So this, I have to assume that one would have panelized an area on top of a glass, right, white and stone, because there was structure. And, you know, when I first looked at the house, I thought it was curious, but I was right. There's a floor structure here holding up the attic floor, so there are no lights, there's no windows in the attic, except for those skylights.
And what's the ceiling height on that attic? I didn't even, sorry, I didn't see that.
Sure, I've got a scale figure in here. This is eight, it changed, I think it's eight.
Four?
It's a big person.
So that structure is there, just as much glass, is that what you're?
The structure, no, that, that skylight that you see?
Yes, the skylight.
Is right here, that pitch that I mentioned, dash line.
So what you're, so that skylight, that it seems to be a skylight, that's what you're adding, or that was something there before that you're changing?
That was something there.
So you're changing that too, that's?
We're removing that skylight, and then that area, we're building out this structure here, and we're putting windows on the side, these windows, and then these windows on the side. So this is now vertical instead of at this angle.
But at that angle, didn't it have windows?
It had these stone light windows here.
So it did have light?
Not original.
It's not original to the house, and they're failing, but yes.
But right now, it is, it has windows. They may not be operable or do what you want, but there are windows there.
Understood, yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll take testimony, and then we may have other questions for you. Max Yeston?
Max Yeston, Landmark West. We recommend that the LPC issue a certificate of appropriateness with the modifications suggested by the committee. In light of the excessive and egregious expansions to historic buildings that our committee frequently reviews, we are pleased the applicants have taken an approach that is sensitive to the nature of a remarkable individual landmark of the Upper West Side, designed by William B. Tuttle, best known as the architect for Carnegie Hall. According to the 1974 Designation Report, the building is, quote, "representative of the development of Riverside Drive as one of the most attractive locations in the city", unquote. Tuttle conceived one of the most exceptional examples of a French Renaissance-inspired building in New York City, defined by, quote, "an interplay of projected and recessed wall sections", unquote, including a two-story bay and a three-sided copper Oriole. Generally, we find the proposed modifications acceptable and appropriate. It is our understanding that the applicants will not drastically expand the building, and that most of the proposed changes will be minimally visible from the street. The original marble, iron, and long-missing elements will be restored, which will increase the building's curb appeal. Below are our specific comments regarding the five major proposed modifications. One, the new eastern window and door modifications are sensitively arranged. Two, lowering the pilasters in the east areaway is a well-thought-out solution to make a usable garden space, which importantly, will not be walled off from public view. Three, pushing out the back stair while retaining the paneled ornament on all three sides will be in keeping with the building's stylistic vocabulary. Four, new mechanical equipment will be hidden from view as opposed to being placed conspicuously on the roof, which would have been an awkward change to the building's massing if done otherwise. This is a design choice of which the committee very much approves. The committee was impressed by the level of sensitivity and research that is evident in the proposal. It is clear that time and energy was expended to ensure the proposed renovations were consistent with the important status of this individual landmark. That said, the proposed dormer on the north facade is the one aspect of the application that concerns the committee. It is large and visible from the public way. We question if this inappropriate addition is being motivated not just by concerns about snow and ice accumulation, but by the desire to create a pleasant sunlit room, as the architects have said. As with other landmarks, the concerns of those living on the inside should not outweigh how the public experiences the building from the public way. We recommend that no C of A be granted by the commission unless the applicant scale down or eliminate this proposed addition of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Zay?
Barbara Zay of the Historic Districts Council. While the applicant has been very thoughtful and is using high-quality materials for the proposed additions, our committee simply questioned the necessity of extending the projecting stair bay and rooftop dormer on the north facade. On a mansion of this size, our committee wondered whether the planned interior changes could be done within the existing framework instead of compromising the structure's massing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, we received a committee recommendation from CB7 that commends the applicant on the extensive and high-quality restoration and renovation work proposed, as well as the thorough and well-organized presentation, so please support the project. So please support the project. All right, questions and comments? Do you like to respond to any of, any comments just on the dormer? I think that seems to have given people some pause, including commissioners.
Right, well, the better understanding of why we're in the back stair, I think, is answered. The dormer, the visibility from the street, I believe, is minimal. This is, actually, we were looking for it that day, and I got a snap of her. That it's not occupying any more footprint and that it is part of the vocabulary of this structure. I think it's a fair request that you consider this. That it allows for the occupant to enjoy the house that they're so lovingly restored. I don't think it should be without consideration, even if it's an inefficient facility.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Oh, Adi, you have questions for the applicant?
I will. It's clear that this is a restoration that's going to be done in an extraordinary way, and it's so wonderful to see this building taken care of and loved as it will be. I'm really opposed to this elevator. It seems unnecessary on a, you know, a building of this height. There's a dumbwaiter, and the dumbwaiter, you know, carries heavy things, it would seem to me, and can in the future. And extending this bay is, and giving it this kind of, allowing it to touch the ground is really unfortunate, I think. So everything else is, seems remarkable, and the building is just unbelievably beautiful. It's just really too bad that you have to put this elevator in.
Roberta?
Yes, I actually have a question, too. On which plan shows the projection of that elevator? Is it shown on a proposed site plan?
Yes.
Yeah, well-
I mean, the bottom part is the same, right? So the site plan is, so is there another floor plan that shows?
There it is.
Now, that's-
Right on top.
Right there.
This is the back stair. The elevator is here inside.
That's the stair.
Right.
Oh, that is the stair.
See, this line was the pedestal of exterior steps that were added to the awesome that were added. And the cantilever is buried within the poche of the new house. It's right here.
Look, where is that visible from, from the up?
It's visible from Riverside Drive as you walk up there from, it's like an oblique angle. Right, isn't that correct?
Yeah, like, you know, like the photo of the street.
Yeah, the photo from the street.
The elevation, sorry, the elevation that shows from the west is here.
Yes, you want, you want to, you can respond, yes.
I would just like to say one thing about the elevator. First of all, the dumbwaiter is not functional anymore, and it wouldn't be accessible by an older person who would live. The first floor is very much a public space, and the floor plan is not changing. There's no bedroom, living space. You can't get to a place to live. And if you're my 85-year-old father, who I hope will spend some time in that house, or we hope to be there at 85, I worry about the day that I can't get into my house and up to a bedroom. So having a passenger elevator, and it's not going to the fourth floor. It's only going to service the first, the English basement, which is where the family kitchen would be, up to the third floor. I don't know how a young family with children or an older couple could live in a house like that without a passenger lift.
I guess the question isn't really about the, you could put in a passenger lift, but it's going to compromise the interior versus the exterior. And since this is an individual landmark, I think the interior is not designated. So what you do over there is up to you. But I think that, at least the question is that, are you compromising the exterior, which is what is designated, because you choose not to put it inside your building?
I've got an arcane code question. Why does this stair, why does this house, this single-family house, require a second means egress stair?
Well, this is the-
Is this the only staircase?
Or the stair, the stair doesn't, the main stair, the central stair does not go all the way up?
It does not go all the way up. And if, for safety reasons, it's so exposed on many levels, you could hardly enclose that.
But why does a single-family house require an enclosed fire stair? Right, but I'm not sure the building code requires that.
Well, they've gotten advice that it does.
Okay, well, maybe it's the size of the house.
Maybe, yeah, you could be.
Maybe it's not that it's too big or something. I'm just wondering, because if it's the stair that, you know, if you could reduce the depth of the stair, that would also alleviate the degree of projection, perhaps.
Yes, Fred?
Even though the interior is not designated, nor would it ever be designated a private home, can you tell us if the interior is unchanged? In other words, it's the original condition? Because that's going to weigh on me.
So the first floor interior is probably the only floor left in the house that resembles it as built. Because there were two different schools inside this. One at the simple school in the 1930s, and then Columbia University for their daycare. The house has been so badly cut up-
I see.
That we aren't making changes, but we're putting it back very, very much, though, in calling the various bedrooms and secondary uses of the house as it was built. So yes, we are making changes, but we're trying to get it back to where it was and eliminate the degradation of the interior. The first, the other set of stairs, the primary stairs, in order to, I believe, make it compatible with fire code, would severely denigrate from the intensive wood carving and open work that it goes from the first to the second floor. So in order to close that, we'd lose all of that as well. It was, believe me, it was none of our intentions. I'd rather not spend the money to build, to move a staircase. The necessary minimal footprint for that passenger lift. In our estimation, after tossing this around for the last little time, it's certainly beyond that.
Excuse me, forgetting, so down into the weeds, but in other words, if you couldn't put it here-
Yeah.
And then kind of rethink this space in some way that could work.
When you go up to the other levels and the other floors as well, it creates significant problems.
Of course.
Doesn't need an elevator.
Yeah, falls into, but once you get to the attic, it's very narrow. And so that would fall into the zone where the fire stair from the attic down to three, that then becomes part of this egress, would be. So we reached a dead end, and we certainly did our due diligence. And also, if someone were old and in a firm, you can't, you have no access to the first floor without a passenger lift at all. And the only access you would now have is the ramp that gets you into the basement, that gets you to that lift, that gets you up to the first floor.
All right, yes.
I know where I stand.
Okay.
I can tell you. I'm sorry it took so long to get there, but I mean, this is a very important house, very important individual landmark. And I think what you're doing to rescue it is abnormal and extraordinary. I can live with the fact that this house, to go forward and provide another 100 years of living without probably a raft of servants living up on the top who didn't get an elevator, whether they needed it or not, maybe that's not going to be the way the house will be lived in. An elevator seems reasonable for a lot of different reasons. If there's no other place to put it, and I think now I understand for me that there isn't a good one, without really wrecking the interior, I can certainly live with what I think is a relatively minimal and relatively minor extension that is relatively not visible from the street as you walk by. So that's my rationale.
All right, you want to say something, Michael?
I agree with Fred. And I think that great care has been taken in all regards and all of the various minor incursions that are done at the perimeter of the house, the terracing, the mechanical pit, the ramp. I think that these are minimal interventions in a house that has languished, unused or underused for years and years, and that has seen enormous degradation over the years. I think restoring it is going to be fantastic. I think that, I remain, I remain a little bit curious as to why the house needs a fire stair. But if that is the case, and if that is a requirement that cannot be overcome, I certainly don't challenge the need for an elevator. I think that the degree of projection is a bit much, and it is going to be visible. But I think it qualifies under the minimally visible rubric that we've used in the past. And the same goes for the dormer. I think that, given all the stuff that's being done to make this house a proper individual monument, historic landmark, I think that the, it's a minor incursion that when it's all done, I don't think anyone's going to notice that it was done.
Okay, yes, Michael?
Because this is an individual landmark, you know, I'm always happy when someone purchases a building that's languishing in New York City. But someone's always going to be purchasing a building that's languishing in New York City and restoring it. I think in this particular case, because that bump out is, for me, a major visual jump, I would want to actually be sure that staff is satisfied that the interior can't be reconfigured in order to put a new lift in somewhere else in the building that doesn't affect the public's perception of the building.
Okay, Reba, can you speak to that right now, or?
Okay.
Okay. Any other concerns from the other commissioners? Because I tend to agree with Fred and Michael on this. I think, you know, it is, I think the work that's being done here is incredibly sensitive. It is a building that is magnificent and is going to come back. And I think that, I also had some concerns, and I think it's unfortunate. It would have been nice if the staircase portion could be pulled back. But if, in fact, you're required to do it, it seems it's been placed at a location which is less visible. And I think the restoration is really going to take a lot of expense and treatment because this is just one of those absolutely amazing buildings in New York. But I think these minor things they're doing to the exterior are not going to take away, and it would be appropriate. Yes?
Well, I think that in terms of the elevator, you can have, I'd agree that they should have an elevator, but I would feel more comfortable understanding that, what the options were again. I know that they said they can't move the stair out and want it to be just looked at again. And I would want to just have some assurances that, I mean, because you just want to see. And that other stair must go there. So I'm asking that they-
Come back?
Just look at that once more and come back.
I agree with Roberta. I mean, if we're going to consent to that much change on the exterior of an individual landmark, and I really do appreciate how much work they're doing on this and how much they're going to invest in it. But if we're going to approve that, I want the staff to be absolutely sure that there's no alternative.
I think that's fine, then. Why don't we bring this back? And Reba can work with them. I think they ought to try and address also, Michael, your question. And I think from that perspective, we will all be clear that this is what you really need to do, and there are no other options. Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, close the hearing.